Welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. If you could please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac?
Here.
Councilmember Kicker?
Here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Brings us down to item one, which would be the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7th, 2020 meeting.
Second. Motion by Kicker, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and those minutes are adopted. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening, starting with item two. I'm sorry, it's to accept the right of entry agreement with Anoka Hanipin Independent School District 11. Anoka Hanipin Independent School District 11, easy for me to say, is completing a building expansion and other site improvements at Coon Rapids High School. The right of entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants, valves, and to flush the water main system. The utility system within the site is considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain it. The right of entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate fire protection. So this motion will be looking to accept the attached right of entry agreement with Anoka Hanipin School District 11, for Independent School District 11, I guess it is, for Coon Rapids High School. The next item on the consent agenda, which is item three tonight, is to accept the drainage and utility easement from Metro Storage Coon Rapids LLC. On March 19th, a public hearing was held in the city council, vacated a street and utility easement to accommodate the construction of a self-storage building located at Foley Boulevard and 101st Avenue Northwest. As a condition of the plat, a new drainage and utility easement needed to be provided by the property owner, Metro Storage Coon Rapids LLC, to the city. The property owner has now provided the new easement, and city staff is asking the council to accept it. So we'll be looking to accept the easement for drainage and utility purposes for Metro Storage Coon Rapids LLC, located on Foley Boulevard and 101st. And then the final item on this evening's consent agenda, which is item four, is to approve an agreement with Anoka County for the purchase of election equipment. All voting precincts in Anoka County must be equipped with a ballot marking device that is accessible for individuals with disabilities pursuant to Minnesota Statute 206.57. And the ballot marking device is currently in use. The ESNS auto marks are at the end of their useful life and must be replaced. The first and only replacement equipment that is comparable, I'm sorry, that is compatible with Anoka County's ballot counters is the Omni Ballot Tablet. So we will be looking at approving an agreement with Anoka County for the purchase of the Omni Ballot ballot marking machines, and that's our full consent agenda. Your Honor. Councilmember Wells?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
On the ballot item, which is the third item on the consent agenda, there's a kind of a complicated formula for what this thing would cost in the annual service fee. I mean, it's not that complicated, but it's hard for me to tell exactly how much this is going to cost the city. Does anybody have any idea?
Ms. Landsmeyer?
Sure. May pull up the item.
Our total cost on it is 141,687, right?
Right, that's the projection. And that's their best guess at this time, and they will clarify if it's going to change. Should not go up, would go down depending on the grant dollars that we get through the county.
Okay, and then how long do we expect to be using this? I mean indefinitely into the future? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. We're looking under bid openings and contract awards, item five. Consider a contract award for the 2020 Street Maintenance Program, Project 20-5. And this is for the bids were received for various materials and services provided under the Regional Street Maintenance Joint Powers Agreement. Items included in this bid package are seal coating, pavement markings, crack sealing, and fog sealing. The cities participating in the 2020 program include Andover, Anoka, Arden Hills, Brooklyn Center, Circle Pines, Columbia Heights, Coon Rapids, East Bethel, Fridley, Ham Lake, Matamede, Moundsview, and St. Francis. So we're getting some real economy of scale there. On February 18th, the council approved plans and specs and ordered advertisement for bids. And in accordance with council direction, bids were received for various street maintenance materials and services on March 13th, 2020. Two bids were received for seal coating, three for pavement markings, and four for crack sealing, and two for fog sealing. A summary of the bids and the bid tabulation showing the unit prices is attached. And we're looking for approval of the four different resolutions. If anybody need more of that described, or any questions for Mr. Hammer first?
A question for Mr. Hammer.
Councilmember Demmer?
Two questions. One of them is, I was surprised to only see two bidders on two of the items. I guess I would have expected a lot of bids going on, and then on the crack sealing, I was surprised to see such a huge difference between the bids. Is there any, any story to the bids that we need to know? Or is that sort of what you would have expected?
Councilmember Demmer, council, it seems to be consistent with the types of bidders we typically get on this. The discrepancy, I think, had something to do with some prevailing wage clauses. And one of the bidders in particular had an issue with that in the past, so I think they were maybe covering themselves, maybe a little too much. But it's the typical cast of characters as it relates to bidding. As you would know from Sir Linesalot, your favorite
Yes, I did see that one. Okay, so this, this low number of bids doesn't surprise you for the seal coating or the fog sealing?
No, there's typically like three or four contractors in the entire metro that do this type of work. These are the ones that might come to be in our area.
Any other questions before somebody takes a shot at making a motion?
I can take a shot at it.
Okay, go ahead.
It's like the longest one of the year, so it's my favorite one. Move to adopt Resolution Number 20-5 Sub 9A, awarding a contract to Allied Blacktop Company for bituminous seal coating in the base bid amount of $953,494.38 and the alternate amount of $947,745.88. Adopt Resolution Number 20-5 Sub 9B, awarding a contract to Sir Linesalot Inc. for pavement marking in the amount of $229,486.50. Adopt Resolution Number 20-5 Sub 9C, awarding a contract to Northwest Asphalt and Maintenance for crack sealing in the amount of $454,101.40. And adopt Resolution Number 20-5 Sub 9D, awarding a contract to Asphalt Surface Technologies for fog sealing in the amount of $371,724.48.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the motion carries. And we are on to new business. Starting with item six, consider Resolution 20-39, reallocating the 2019 general fund budget and amending the 2019 and 2020 budgets. Mr. Stemwell, you want to just cover that, or you want me to read this, or Ms. Hanson?
Mayor, council, I'll defer to Fran Hanser and our finance director to just give you a summary on this item and the following one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is just our year-end resolution to make sure we don't have any negative balances in our general fund for our financial statements, and also making sure that we don't have any carryforwards that were missed in our original carryforward memo in November. And so we did have two additional carryforwards for the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department, and also an antenna to help with the radios and public work, for a total of $119,000.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Ms. Hanson before we look at a motion on that? Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Grischoviac?
I do have a question on this one. Those self-contained breathing apparatus units. If I remember right, those, we approved that purchase in 2019. We actually amended the 2019 budget. To approve that purchase, that was in October. Did they, apparently they didn't get purchased, or they weren't delivered, or can you explain how?
Sure. Councilmember Grischoviac, yes. I was told by the fire chief that they had to delay the purchase of these because they wanted to be involved in a consortium. So they actually got $10,000 less in the purchase price by joining the consortium. So instead of the $100,000 that we amended, it ended up only costing $90,000. So that's where the delay came from.
Okay, so we amended the 2019 instead of putting it in the 2020, and now we're just making right on that. I got it.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move approval and adoption of Resolution 20-39, reallocating the 2019 general fund budget and amending the 2019 and 2020 budgets.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. Next item on our agenda then is item seven. Consider Resolution 20-40, authorizing the transfer of funds. And this is just more of the same? Big nod.
Yeah. Mayor, Miss, and council, this is the memo at the end of the year to make sure and authorize all the transfers that had to be made within various funds within the city. Most of these are budgeted each year in order to fulfill needs within each department. And every year we always have some transfers between our capital project funds and our debt funds in order to transfer the money from the bonding and close some of those accounts when they're no longer needed. So the biggest transfer on here is, of course, the facility construction transfer of 1.2 million from the general fund. This is from the excess funding available to transfer. This is unbudgeted every year, however, when there are excess funds that exceed our 45% fund balance, we have in the past allocated to facility construction to help with facility maintenance needs throughout the city.
All right. Council, any questions, or somebody want to make a motion here?
Oh, I'll take that one. So with that, make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-40, authorizing the transfer of funds.
Second. Motion by Geiser, second by Wells. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Grischoviac?
I have a couple of questions on this one. First would be on that big transfer in the Facilities Construction Fund. First of all, what, what is going to be the balance in the Facilities Construction Fund after this transfer?
I believe the Facility Construction Fund will carry about, gosh, I don't have that information from me, but I believe the fund balance will be over 3 million for two, starting 2020.
And that's going to be 3 million over our estimated or our budgeted project, specifically the roof that we're putting on the city center?
Oh, no, no council member. All the money that we put in there is allocated to the 2020 projects. We try to make sure we, we don't budget any money to make that fund go negative or get near a point where we don't have any money for emergency items that need to be repaired. So yes, we make sure and cover all budgeted items, and then if there is a remainder of fund balance at the end of the year, we either use it for a project in the future year, or if something emergency comes up that we need, you know, like let's say we need new windows because something happened. So that's kind of how that fund works.
Okay, and I just want a clarity on that because I thought you mentioned that this big transfer is going to go into the Cities Construction Fund for unbudgeted, for unbudgeted.
No, I'll clarify that. It wasn't, it's never budgeted in our original budget. So we keep it out of the budget because we never know if it's going to be there at year end. I mean, we could at some year not have a transfer if we don't have any excess funds. So when we do adopt our budget, we don't include this as a transfer. This is why at year end, we, when we do have money left over, we want to come to council and explain that, you know, we did have some leftover money in the general fund that now can be allocated over to facility construction. So now when we budget for our 2021 budget coming up, we will be able to use those funds.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. That's kind of what I was thinking, but I wanted to hear it one more time. I have the same question, I think, every year. The other, the other question, or maybe more of a concern, is with the general fund to the compensated absences fund of $186,000. This, this is my understanding is that, so we're funding unused absent time, sick time and paid time off that folks aren't taking. And I remember in the last, last year when we approved some contracts with some of the groups, that this came up because I know that there are municipalities that are starting to have liability issues with this, that the amount of unused sick time is getting to be a big liability. So is, and maybe that question for you or the city manager, are you seeing that trend in our city, and is it something that we should be addressing in future contracts?
Councilmember Grischoviac, I'll take a stab at that one. The reason we do this transfer every year at year end, we do a spreadsheet to make sure that all of our liabilities are covered, and this would be for unused vacation and unused sick leave. And so this transfer is budgeted at a round number, and then we actually transfer whatever is needed to fulfill the needs to make sure that we can pay all those if we need to. So that is fully funded in our internal service fund. And the increase this year, I'll just go on to tell you, basically, you know, we have a 3% COLA increase, which again, if people have remaining balances, will be added to their balance. And also any people who have unused vacation more than they had the year before, or sick leave available. So that's how that fund operates.
And then to follow up, it's my understanding that there's a cap on how much of that can actually carry over. You just can't carry over year over year.
Correct. And vacation leave, for people under a certain year of service, they get to carry over 120 hours. And our long-term employees get to carry over 200 hours. And of course, our sick leave is capped each year for a maximum, I believe, of 815 hours. I'll defer to Matt. Am I correct on that one?
Mayor, council? Yes, there, there is a cap both on the amount of vacation you can carry over up to 200 hours or 160, if you've been with the city fewer than, I think, 10 years. I'm losing track of the exact cutoff. With sick leave, it's 50%, up to 480 hours, I believe, Fran, on sick leave payout that goes into your NSRS account or your retirement savings account.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions before somebody throws out a motion? Or is somebody willing, ready to make a motion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution
We already have the motion.
Yep.
We do?
Remind them.
Yeah. It was before the cut, and then we had comments.
Oh, no kidding. Well, there you go. I forgot to write it down.
Geisler and Wells.
Very good. It was so long ago. All right. So we have a motion and a second, and no further discussion. Any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Then we are on to item eight. Consider Resolution Number 20-41, supporting a master plan amendment to the Coon Creek Regional Trail. That was a pretty impressive little book they sent along. Mr. Hammer, Mr. Stemwell, you want me to just read the discussion, or you want to cover this?
Mr. Mayor, I can briefly describe. It's an amendment to the Coon Creek Regional Trail. The only thing that's changing within this was, was at our request for inclusion of the pedestrian bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard. So this entire comp plan update or master plan update is related to the inclusion of that item. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hammer on this before we move to a motion?
Air?
Councilmember Grischoviac?
I have a question. Has, has Anoka County come forward with any cost sharing estimates on this, or anything along that line? I know we've got this in front of the state for bonding money, but as Anoka County, since it's part of the park system, have they, have they stepped up yet?
Councilmember Grischoviac, I assume you're talking about from a funding perspective? And we haven't explored any additional funding opportunities other than this one that's on the agenda later tonight for the regional solicitation as well as the bonding. So there hasn't been any further conversations with Anoka County regarding any participation from them.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
Your Honor? Councilmember Wells?
In my understanding, this does not commit us to any funds at all. I mean, if it comes back that we're getting no assistance whatsoever, we're not in any way committed to doing this. The pedestrian bridge, I mean.
That's correct, Mr. Stemwell. You're nodding, yes, okay.
Mayor, council, that's correct. The direction given to us by council was to pursue other opportunities, and you have one of them before you tonight in the regional solicitation, as well as in the state bonding process, and both of which we are attempting at this time. And depending on how those funding mechanisms come together, obviously we'll have additional discussions about the future of the bridge, and if none of those things come through, we'll probably have a different discussion about the future of that bridge.
All right, what do you want to do, council?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd move approval of Resolution 20-41, supporting the Coon Creek Regional Trail Master Plan Amendment.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. To a related item, nine, consider Resolution Number 20-42, approving a 2020 multi-use trails and bicycles facilities grant application. Okay, so I can read the discussion, or does somebody want to just give the highlights here? Mr. Hammer, I'd like you to volunteer.
As you said, it's a continuation somewhat of the last item. It's a regional solicitation grant through the Metropolitan Council to try to secure funding for the Coon Rapids Boulevard pedestrian bridge, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions related to this.
All right, anybody have any questions, Mr. Hammer on it?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
So it says a city cost participation of 50% for the project, up 20% from the previous application. Okay, this is what I was going to ask. The city's share could be funded by the state bonding request, so if the state bonding request comes back at 2 million, then this is essentially an ask for 2 million from the Met Council, or how, how do you see it going forward dollars-wise if this does work?
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, that number was adjusted because we do have some bills introduced that are asking for 50% of the cost share for this project. It was in the governor's bonding bill. It is now still in the House Capital Investment Committee's bill that was released last week at 50%. So to match those thing up, those two items up with this application, and frankly, to help improve the scoring for this application, made sense to adjust this one to 50% with the hope that both would come through if possible.
But the state bonding does not need a city match as well, right?
Mayor, council, the, the capital investments at the state level generally require, well, typically will only fund up to 50% for a project like this, so this would be the other half.
Okay, so we're, we have two different bonds that ask for 50%, and we're just using each of them as 50% to try to get off without any city money? All right, good luck with that. That sounds great.
Don't know unless you ask.
Hey, yeah, yeah.
All right. Was that going to be a motion, Mr. Councilmember Johnson, or what?
Yeah, with that, with that, I would move adoption of Resolution 20-42, approving the application for a multi-use trails and bicycle facilities grant through the Met Council's 2020 Regional Solicitation Program to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Discussion?
I do have one more question.
Councilmember Demmer?
Are there any additional 50% that we could shoot for? Like, could the county put in for one? I mean, you know, if we, if we enter a bunch of grants, we had a better chance of it all getting paid for. I'm, I'm, you know, we, we ask if the county's in for any money, but right now we're not in for any money, so why not see if the county can get some grants too?
Yeah, they could.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, you know, I think depending on the outcome of this application and the state bonding process, you'll have a, have a better understanding of what the financial realities of this project are. If there is, let's say we're lucky to get one of them, and we have 50% funding. Obviously, we're looking to fill that potentially with other sources and/or city and county funds, and you know, this is TIF-eligible. As it's along the Boulevard for some pool TIF funds that we have. You know, it's really a council's desire at that point, if they want to pay the 50%, if we want to pursue the county for some sort of funding, or if there are other places out there that we could seek this. So hopefully in the next couple of months, we have a better idea as the session closes out and as this application process winds up. But until then, we'll just have to kind of wait and see where these things come through.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. We're on to item 10, consider Resolution 20-43, approving a 2020 roadway expansion grant application. Every two years, the regional solicitation process allocates federal transportation funds to locally initiated projects to meet regional transportation needs. And as the region's federally designated metropolitan planning organization, the Met Council works with the Transportation Advisory Board to review and allocate these funds. To assist in funding the proposed project, staff intends to submit an application in the roadway expansion category. And as part of the application, the city is requested to provide a resolution of support for the project. And this is, we're seeking additional access And this is, we're seeking additional access to trunk highway six-ten near Coon Rapids Boulevard, uh, but we've been looking for many years. Um, and currently only westbound on-ramps and eastbound off-ramps to and from six-ten. Exist at both East River Road and Coon Rapids Boulevard. The proposed six-ten interchange and adjacent approved. Fully Boulevard Railroad grade separation project were discussed in a work session with county staff and commissioners on February twelfth. City and county staff have worked with project consultants to investigate interchange design options for several years. And preliminary plans are being considered. In September twenty nineteen, the Interchange Review Committee agreed. That the latest proposed design met the standards for further consideration. So as the approved funded fully railroad grade separation project advances to construction in twenty twenty-one. City and Anoka County staff will begin working to coordinate with this potential interchange project. Additionally, project funding for preliminary design and environmental documents is included in the current state capital bonding. Request. Okay, so Mr. Hammer, I just read all your notes. Is there anything you wanted to add to that? Nope. Anybody have any questions or?
Uh, Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt resolution number twenty dash forty-three approving the application for roadway expansion grant through the Metropolitan Council's. Twenty twenty regional solicitation program to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Demmer. Who got that in? Was that Johnson or Kicker? I missed it.
Kicker got it.
Kicker got it. All right, motion by. Demmer, second by Kicker, right? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Um, item eleven is to consider a change order for project nineteen dash twelve. Port River Walk grading development and erosion control. Um, this was kind of exciting. It sounds like they're gonna have a, a pond over there, huh? Um, this change order is required for installation of an HDPE pond liner. River rock drain tile and other necessary materials needed to construct rate control pond. Within the Port River Walk development. Um, the items are needed, uh, re- required due to higher than expected groundwater levels. And is necessary to eliminate the pup potential of mobilizing existing buried contaminants. Located within this area of the development project. For the city's purchase agreement with Central Homes, they have agreed in writing. To fully reimburse the city for one hundred percent of the costs associated with the change order. I mean, add to that, Mr. Hammer?
Somehow it sounded less exciting when you read it.
Well, it did when it started talking about contaminants floating up, right?
Uh, Your Honor?
Uh, Councilmember Demmer?
Uh, move to approve the attached pond liner change order from North Pine. Aggregate in the amount of two hundred three thousand four hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Which will be reimbursed back to the city by Central Homes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Uh, this was the, for phase one of that grading that I know we paid for, but now that we've closed. On that deal with Centra, why is the city paying for this uh change order instead of Centra right up front?
Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Griscoviac, if you recall, this became a city project. So once we started down that path of having it a public improvement, it needed to remain that way. So we did get escrow funds from Central Homes uh for the difference of the outstanding costs. This was something we were hoping to, to roll into the phase two construction. It never materialized, so we have to put it back into the grading. Thus their agreement to, to fund it.
Okay, fully funded back to the city.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Uh, we are on the open mic public comment portion. Do we have anybody waiting or anything for open mic this evening? No? All right.
No, we got one hand up.
We do? We have a, we have a Bruce Nelson on the screen. Is that for open mic?
Am I there?
Uh, you, you are.
Okay, you actually see my face or I'm just seeing I have the little eye that doesn't, the little.
We just, we just see your name. It says Bruce Nelson.
Okay. Well, I was wanting to address um.
Mr. Nelson, before you start, could you just give us your address for the record, please?
Um, I live at ten thirty-three Ninety-third Avenue Northwest. And so I'm right off the six-ten Foley East River Road area.
All right, okay, very good.
In fact, according to your plans, m- my home is one that will be taken. So I want to know, um, in light of what is happening, reviewing the. Three million unemployed, the three trillion or more that the federal government's going to be borrowing. The state's rainy day fund and their surplus has disappeared. The local hospitals are losing thirty million a day or the state hospitals are losing thirty million a day. I just wonder what the city council. He, as their funding sources for a lot of these projects. Um, I work at a university. All capital projects are put on hold. People are taking layoffs. I see the, the city's planning on a raise, not a layoff. I see. I hear of, you know, we have limits on non-state workers or city workers. There are a lot of limits on your. PTO and, you know, carrying things over. And it seems like you guys have a pretty, pretty generous package there. But wondering going forward, um, if things are, I mean, look at the price of oil. Um. Negative thirty-two dollars a barrel. Uh, you're funding for the road projects and stuff. I appreciate that you want to do good things for the city, but when. W- what is realistic at this time period for when we're spending so much money? And that's not to mention that FEMA will probably be stepping up and wanting money because thousands of people have lost their homes. And communities are devastated down in the southern parts of this country. So we're looking at, we have a lot of real needs. And then we have a lot of things that we would like to do that we don't really need to do. And in asking to get money. Um, that maybe would be better spent helping people that have real needs rather than things that we don't need. And I've maintained for a long time that that Foley Bridge, the railroad overpass is really not. Needed. There, the safety, there, there hasn't been an accident at that crossing yet. So I don't know how you can improve on the safety rating of perfect safety when there. How are you going to improve on that when on six-ten, there's been more serious accidents on six-ten in the last two years? Than there have been on the railroad crossing in the last fifty. So. I'm just wondering, is the city going to care back any of their work? Noting that the state might say, sorry, folks, we're out of money? And the feds are already out of money? Um, that's one comment that I had, that I am very concerned that I don't see any. Any reality here that your tax bases are in trouble.
Okay, you got about fifteen seconds here. What, can you squeeze your next comment in or what?
The next comment in is, I would like to know what you're going, I read your city ordinance on noise. And between the cars and the motorcycles, the noise level around here is excessive. You cannot even talk outside some days with social distancing. I was trying to talk to my neighbor and we had to stop our conversation for almost a full minute while cars were going by racing up six-ten. Now, I was happy to see that there was some police out on six-ten today to slow it down. But what does the city, how does the city enforce this noise ordinance? And have they ever enforced this wonderful noise ordinance that they wrote? It's in the city code. But I don't know how you enforce it.
Okay, well, Mr. Nelson, we will, uh, staff will prepare something for you and. And they will, we'll, we'll get that back to you and we'll read it at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that. I know I was, there, I would suggest that they. Not worry about trying to catch them because it's too random to catch them. But there are systems out there now that they could take a picture of the offending vehicle and get a license plate number. And then later check out the vehicle to see if it's street legal.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thanks for the call in. Is there anybody else for open mic this evening? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to. Um, yes?
There's a second gentleman, John Holland.
Oh, all right. Mr. Holland, are you here for open mic? Josh, can you? Mr. Holland, are you, or, or not? Oh, no, he's not here for open mic. Go ahead and mute them. All right. So we will close the open mic portion of the meeting. And we're looking at an open mic report um from item twelve. From last week or I'm sorry, from our last city council meeting. And we had uh Mr. Worster of um apartment in uh Coon Rapids. Let's see here. The city completed instantly, oh, here we go, I'm sorry. Um, he inquired about sidewalk gaps on the north side of Coon Rapids Boulevard between Hanson and Egrit. The service road between a hundred and seventh and Thrush Street and in front of twenty-five oh one Coon Rapids Boulevard. As well as noting fencing around three of the city's outdoor warning sirens and not the remaining twelve. Uh, the response was the city completed installation of several new sidewalk segments in two thousand eighteen along the north side of Coon Rapids Boulevard. Between the city limit with Anoka and Hanson Bou- um, uh, between the city limit with Anoka and Hanson Boulevard. And at that time, twenty-five oh one Coon Rapids Boulevard, the former Willie's Bar and Restaurant, was going through a property transition. An easement is required to install a sidewalk segment along that property, which made negotiation and acquisition of a sidewalk easement. Not possible for the city at that time. Staff plans to work with a new property owner over the next few years to obtain, to obtain the necessary easement and complete the sidewalk gap. Uh, staff continues to review missing sidewalk segments on the north side of Coon Rapids Boulevard between Hanson and Egrit. With the expected completion of missing sidewalks in the Port River Walk area anticipated in two thousand and twenty. Staff will prioritize completing the remaining sidewalk gaps between Hanson and Egrit in the next few years as well. The city will not be installing a sidewalk along the Coon Rapids Boulevard and Service Road between Thrush and a hundred and seventh avenue. Similar to a low-traffic-volume cul-de-sac, the service road does not meet the city's criteria for sidewalk installation. Additionally, adequate space is not available within or adjacent to the public right-of-way. To construct a sidewalk along the service road in this area. With regard to fencing around a few outdoor warning sirens, staff has not done any recent improvements at any sites. It is believed that the fences noted were initially installed to provide security perimeters at open sites with high-foot traffic. And that was staff response there. And we are up to other business. It's been a complete shuffling. I'm looking up to another corner now for Mr. Stemodle.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I will just mention a couple of things. Uh, first, to continue to encourage people that if they want the most up-to-date information. On our response to the COVID nineteen um situation. Uh, to please visit our website and sign up for alerts as uh they go up frequently as things are changing. Uh, generally though, all events through the end of May have been canceled that are organized at a city level. Uh, we are, of course, aware that the governor's order extends through May third. But we're certain there'll be some sort of uh additional social distancing requirements that come off, come on even after that date. And so those events through the end of, end of May have just been canceled in preparation for that. Um, a couple of uh positive things that I want to share with you on that front. First, at the fire department stations, one, two, and three will be collecting homemade masks this weekend on Saturday from ten to two. Um, these masks will be collected at the stations, but then redistributed to facilities that are in need of them, like congregant care facilities and the like. Um, across the area. And it's part of a larger statewide effort to collect these masks and get them into the hands of some facilities that could use them. Um, so if you are, have any at home or are capable of making them, we do ask that you uh make those and drop them off. At one of our fire stations this weekend, again, Saturday from ten to two. There's some more information on our website about that, including instructions how to make those masks if you're interested. And then the second item is that late on Friday, we found out that the governor was going to allow recreational facilities of certain type to open. Including golf courses under additional social restrictions, social distance restrictions. And we were ready and able to open Bunker Hills Golf Club immediately on Saturday, once that provision was enabled by the governor. And according to our golf director, Tim Anderson, they had a very successful weekend out there. Um, very few kinks uh that came through. They were, their plan was a good one and. Took a lot of the things that people lea- people would normally touch as a part of their golf round, like the rakes and the ball washers and things of that sort. Um, not all of the course was open, but we are gearing up for that this weekend. Uh, still working through a, a few items like how to manage the golf carts and things of that nature, but. Um, that was a positive for us to get some folks back into that facility this weekend. I was able to drive by on Sunday afternoon. I saw some people golfing out there and it was great to see. Along with that, we are anticipating Mullies Tap Shack will be open this weekend to provide concessions to folks that are out there. Uh, Morsey Hospitality jumped on the opportunity now that there's going to be some activity out there to bring back a small portion of the beverage op- uh, food and beverage operation. At Bunker Hills, uh, we're all looking forward, of course, to Kendall's and the events that are opening, but that's probably a little further down the road. Uh, but at least for now, Mullies will be open, so you can go out there and get your double double and uh your hot dog perhaps and. You know, feed yourself as you're going around the golf course. And I think that's primarily it on um updates related to COVID nineteen.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I, I have one item and I know I, I think Chief Wise will probably talk a little bit about it, you know. I've had a lot of comments um from the weekend car show activity that's been along the Boulevard. And, you know, while a lot of people really like seeing the cars and it's great to have them, you know, in the city and supporting the, the restaurants along the way. Um, there are a, a few things that, you know, drinking in the parking lots, not a good idea. Um, the burnouts, the really loud revving of the engines. Um, I've had a number of different complaints on that. And so I would, was just going to ask Chief Wise if you can give your update for kind of the rules of the road. As we go into this next weekend um with the, the Coon Rapids cruise.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Geisler and uh the rest of the council. Is that, yeah, we're aware. Of this uh event. Um, we were made aware of it a couple of weeks ago and basically just monitored on its face. Uh, and the event organizer who's associated with the Anoka Car Club. Um, their intention is to make a perfectly lawful event. In, in a sense, they're just wanting it to be a classic car parade. Which is, uh, sounds great. It sounds great to us and the police department. Their biggest fear all along has been that there would be select individuals that might try to ruin it for everyone. And I assure you that the group that's um coordinating this uh effort is all on board with. Uh, strict enforcement for those who uh try to do that. That said, is that. The Coon Rapids Police Department did uh put out a message on the Facebook page, a Facebook page that's associated with the um. Um, Cruise Coon Rapids. And our message was that um squad cars will be participating in the parade as well. Um, we'll wash our cars up real nice, but if we see somebody speeding, doing a burnout or any other. Illegal activity, they will be stopped and they will be cited for the offense. Uh, secondarily, um, we're aware of, of cars sto- stopping in the parks or in parking lots. And that uh drinking um in public is still a violation of state statute.
And we'll be aggressively enforcing that as well. Um, on its face, it has. It appears to be a great opportunity for people to highlight their classic cars. I have no idea how big this is gonna be, but there's a lot of people with classic cars that are finding out about this via Facebook. And, um, like I said, it has the potential to be a real nice event and. Our intention is to nip all that kind of activity in the bud so it stays nice. Um, if we lose control of it, then we'll have to come back. To council perhaps and revise some ordinances or something like that, but we believe that we can keep this event under control. And the very few individuals that make an effort to ruin it will be, I use the metaphor, plucked out like a weed. So that the, uh, rest of the folks can do this, uh, classic car parade and, and make it a benefit to our city, not a detriment.
Thank you. I know that, you know, I've just gotten a number of different calls with concern, so I appreciate. The, your staff taking a. Participative, um, action to, to make sure it stays nice for everybody.
Yeah, let me, let me add into that and, and I need to highlight the point. Uh, Coon Rapids Boulevard is a public road. And the activity that the Facebook page is promoting is a lawful activity. It's just cars driving down a public road. And so on its face, there's nothing that we can do about the event itself. It's the illegal activity that might be associated with the event and we can deal with that.
Sounds really great that there's going to be a place that, uh, I can get out of my house, stay socially distanced. And let my kids watch old classic cars and police cars at the same time, so. I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be a few people parked on the service roads watching that.
You might even see a, a council member to join that parade, so.
I was thinking it might be, I was thinking we might see some of our fire crew out there with our old fire truck out there.
Well, and actually, let me, let me add on to that is that, um. The, the support for the police department has been so great is that we were out there last Saturday and wrote some tickets and the Facebook messaging we got back. Was encouraging us to do more of that. Um, so like I said, the, the people that are officially a part of this, the classic car clubs. Just want to take their quote, drive for pleasure, end quote, which is allowed by the governor's executive order. And they want to enjoy a nice Saturday cruise and see other cars that are running down the road. They want it to be an event that Coon Rapids can support. They do not want it to be an event that Coon Rapids City Council or citizens oppose and want to try to end. That's their goal.
And to, to that end, they would be, they're happy to point out their troublemakers. And they're very thankful for the Coon Rapids Police. Um, and they apply as much peer pressure as they can to, to maintain, you know, stay within the law. So, yeah, I've, I've just got so many positive comments. On, on that from the people involved, from residents and, you know. I, 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 I hope there's a way that it, that it can keep on going.
Here, here.
All right. Any other business to come before council this evening? All right, uh, Mr. Fernelius, it looks like there's gonna be another block of money available for small businesses because the last one went. So quickly. Um, is there anything that, that we're doing to help facilitate or appoint people in a direction or? How do you, how do you see our businesses faring?
Sure, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. So yes, I, I, I did see that, uh, in the news that, uh. That a, a deal was reached in Congress, uh, for additional. Funding for the, uh, the two primary, um, federal programs, the Paycheck Protection Program. Uh, which is run through the SBA, actually it's run through, um, SBA participating banks and then the economic. Um, Injury Disaster Loan Program. Um, so we've been updating our website and we actually updated it. Uh, earlier this week when the funds ran out, we'll, we'll definitely update. Uh, that once more is known about the availability of those dollars. We would expect. Um, that there'll be a lot of people applying for, for those funds. If I remember correctly, Minnesota, I think. Received about seven billion of that three hundred and fifty billion dollars worth of, uh, Paycheck Protection Program money, so. There no doubt is, is need in our state and, and certainly in our local economy as well, so. As that, as we get more information, we'll certainly, uh, update our, our website.
Excellent, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, I was just gonna add to that, that one of the things our community development department and Grant is leading is, uh, a reach out. Campaign to our businesses just to better understand. Um, how they're doing and offer assistance, whether that's just facilitating some connections or. Better understanding where there might be some gaps in their need, uh, whether it's, um. Places where they weren't able to get SBA financing or things of that nature. And so, um, if you are a business, you know of a business in the town that. Um, is in need of some help or at least some facilitation of, of that. That business assistance, please do reach out to us. You, you will get a phone call hopefully through our community development department. Uh, but that'll take us a while to get through that entire list. We'll have a few staff people working on that. Uh, but if you already know or have some idea, go ahead and give us a call and, uh, have that conversation. We'd really appreciate it.
All right. Excellent, thank you. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Your Honor?
Who was that? Councilmember Wells?
Yeah, I guess I was muted before, but, uh, just real quick. Uh, and I don't expect an answer, but I guess I'd like to strongly consider us meeting in person on May fifth. I think we could be, you know, set an example how social distancing can be done and things can kind of get back to, uh. You know, some normalcy. Uh, I realize we've got to see where things go, but, uh. Uh, you go into a cub and there's hundreds and hundreds of people in there and, uh, I think we could, uh, run a meeting and, uh. Be responsible, but that's my opinion.
I, I, I agree with that opinion, so.
All right, aren't you high risk though, Steve?
My body's a temple.
I look forward to sitting next to you again.
All right, excellent. Any other business to come before council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by kicker to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. We're adjourned. Perfect, thank you.